Sorry about that, not to invite, want to welcome everybody to South Carolina. I'm the chairman of the commission, the city of Wichita, and this is the September twenty three Wichita County Bank of Order Trust. With that, I want to go ahead and you have the whole, I have the meeting, you have the president, your chief, your membership, um, Marsha Allenburg, Jerome Sisilia, and I believe it's Tiffany on live stream recording.
I'm present.
Okay, Amy Scott much, um, and at this point in time, we need to, we just had a family commitment, South Carolina, and we did not get seen on this for West. And also, I have a couple of months back to the minutes for the March of approval. And since this time, I wanted to cross the group, not only the minutes from last, maybe August 19th, but also the minutes from July twelve to June fourteenth. And note that Forum has not been present yet all of these meetings, but we're still taking notes from those meetings to see how the business and the presentation that have been made up to.
We got one today, so we can put on all these.
Please do.
I was not here on June, July, so I don't feel like I can move to approve those.
I wasn't there on August eighth, by the way.
Thanks. Okay, so year of July. I gave my minutes away, so I know.
Well, we want to, so so you can, um, we're giving a quick one set at a time.
Let's do that. Let's go ahead and start with the June fourteenth.
That one, I can put that one, so let's hear it from that.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kay. All in favor, say aye. Okay, it's July twelfth. What do you want to approve of?
See, thank God. I'll make a motion to approve it July twelfth.
Okay, and you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kay. All in favor, all of us saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the August ninth minutes. Uh, I was there. I would make a motion to approve that with one change. I believe the date on the minutes, uh, reflect September twentieth, we need to change that to August ninth.
Thank you, we agree that.
Other than that, I move, we approve those. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good.
Excellent. That allows us to start fresh. So one of the things that we've been watching for quite some time, we've been considering tax sale. And in our process, we've been figuring out what the twenty twenty three tax sale. And so I wanted to share a few updates. I think there is an opportunity for additional analysis, but we had a number of early analysis to report on what we've seen so far. And so as we've been tracking throughout our time, really, some of these numbers, the most of us here, and this tax sale, by the start of one hundred and thirty six properties that were allowed in this tax sale. By the time that all reductions or other actions that take place in the tax sale, or any properties were options, many one properties were offered for sale on that option, and eating properties sold. There were three that received no bids, including one that are linked into this area. And we haven't done deeper analysis yet with the predictions of those monthly, but it is pretty important because one of the things we can do is certainly everything that we felt with the way the tax sale auction is conducted. So as I mentioned before, we saw nine properties auctioned on auction, nine in this area, and we got the four of those properties, well, they had a deficit. Now, there was one property that had a deficit of nearly another thousand dollars, they're probably a large commercial company. So I did not include that in this average. And so we're seeing that the average deficit was about sixteen, only three fifteen. That's actually quite a small part of some of the deficits that we saw in our previous analysis at the December twenty twenty two, we passed, we were saying. And many of the properties that were deficits were very small deficits, but also various small, um, delinquencies as well. We also did a rough analysis, trying to look at, um, one of the things that properties may have been overoccupied or owned by, but if it wasn't, you know, and it's based on an address that was listed within the house sale. So if that address matched, uh, between the parcel and the, we noted the address, we identified as a likely owner occupied property. And so we saw that it's, um, just over a quarter of properties, sorry, yeah. You try to order the properties for other. And that's also a data point we're looking at in some of our other figure analysis. And so we also see where the twenty twenty three tax sale, um, we are seeing where some of the violations that came from this tax sale, which includes with other properties that were on a greater data basis, a little bit later this meeting. Um, the properties that were in this sale that were in four different sale data basis, we saw eight of them, and one of them was auctioned, so that's a twelve point five percentage, um, percentage of properties in that situation of also auctions. We saw forty properties that appeared in three tax sales, and nine of those were auctioned. So we actually saw a high percentage of those who had been leased out sales. And similar percentages in, we weren't entered during properties in those tax sales that were in two tax sales. I'm on the twenty five option. And so really, that's the two of the I started terms of analysis at this recent sale. It was conducted two weeks ago, and we haven't seen final analysis of activity for a lot of time to date. But we are actively looking at these results because the use of the stories that we see in the tax sale data also inform our land bank activities. So are there any questions in the, um, twenty twenty three tax sale, including the two months ago?
On that chart there, a hundred and nine properties, two tax sales, twenty five options, twenty two point nine percent. What happened to the rest of them?
Rest of them were either redeemed or dropped, or they were actually taken in the preventions, and they were also given to the tax sale auction.
The next one's all the way through, so the next one, that's the next share, right?
Yeah, we are starting to receive any information yet on the next one. But that is the partnership that we established, we receive updates and both the financials and the day by day updates on personal identity, or prompts, or other action.
What is the current policy on how long before they go to auction? How many years behind?
They don't have that written, even if it's four years.
Four, right. But it can go for four. I think, I think.
It's three.
I don't think it's.
It's three.
Two, two and a half.
But most of what we're seeing, there tends to be about like a twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. And I'll show, um, some of the pieces that we've been talking during this a little bit, I'll show some of this.
So we started out with four hundred and sixty seven properties that were four years old.
Yes.
Um, and we actually sold. It's a number of, sorry.
Uh, no, four.
Is that a pretty consistent percentage that actually gets sold versus how many discontinued people are sold?
And so, um, we are still in the process, and we'll share more in the table report as well. Still in the process of doing analysis, but that seems to be sustainable.
Is that a costly process to step through this auction every, every year?
It is.
Has there ever been given any thought to maybe, you know, be? If it's just a, every year, it's just a financing tool for people to decrease that, to change that process? I mean, you may have heads every year. That, I know, but maybe not this area, but if there's something that can be done to help shore that, maybe it's three years.
And some of those might be things that we bring within rapid C, kind of making this a measure. We're going to be all making innovation on what we're proposing with that at this. Um, so really, our goal in analyzing not only this current tax sale, but also the deeper data piece, is to understand where the land bank might have a role, where partnerships are needed, where potentially land bank could serve as an alternate to either help avoid companies getting to the place where there being the auctions, or help to prevent properties from entering that auction process, or the tax affiliate process over and over.
So we started the process of trying to market that to the public, I guess. Is there somehow we're going to something that information wise to? Hey, you can, but like this is a pretending, or this is a tax auction, whether, you know, it be in there. Tax, uh, county, eastern, tax, uh, urgent, or, or water bill, something like that. But we already talked about that in the last minutes. I don't know. It wasn't here still.
We have not, the initial comments, and we have not progressed with that. That's actually the most information of the report at all, because there are leaders need to be called with that. And just that, yeah, and prior to you coming on, um, and coming support for the new thing, we did do a targeted outreach with them, obviously, to, um, property owners that have their properties, you know, for a sale. And, um, we really went through some back and forth on those individual goals, and we've been deciding to them.
Yeah.
To them, that's best, so. Similarly, with this file, then we also did outreach to, I believe, eighteen properties in this area, and kind of response.
So, well, I think we'll continue to do that, see if there's a better way. I think once we get this report finalized, kind of feel better understanding of what actually occurs, then we'd have a better idea of target. So on page four of this report, I'd like you to explain a little bit on that very first paragraph, the data set, the cost of tax sales allocated to parcels.
And actually, would you like me to jump ahead and incident reports?
Uh, sure, that's a good point.
I, I'd like to, to make reference to that. Um, this, this particular report that's pulled up right at the moment was just regarding twenty twenty three sale that took place a couple weeks ago. And so we will come back to personal updates and go deeper into the analysis of the tax of the later sale. Just a moment to get things situated. Uh, I felt like it was probably easier to kind of go through the report, and screen those credit card forms. And there's a lot of information here, and I am glad to do this as a dialogue, to kind of share a section and take questions that you have. And and I think there's a lot of initial research here, and a lot of, um, on, I hope there are any questions that we can continue to look into. And so I believe it was actually coming out of this regard, really, a lot of terrain out of tax, or property sales that are currently taking place. But, um, look at an eye, we found out that there are different filings with the cases, this was all new information to us. And so we began bringing information to the board about exhibit A, exhibit D, and talking about what we can change a little bit more. And as a result, the Wichita County Bank of Order staffed, staffed, which has been entertaining, is a review of data from the tax portfolio of sales. And we wanted to better understand what is taking place within that program, comes with the methodology itself, as well as other certain public interest, um, in the way that it goes to land when taxes and interest properties into the private markets. Part of that challenge is because those are similar opportunities and duties between the tax sale and what the land bank is able to do. This one is a five things as we've developed, to make Wichita has legitimately, and it's a different, and a different operation than like the tax sale too. And it's very needed this program. And so this review helps to identify areas in which we believe land bank could power the central county to more effectively serve the public interest, um, as well as areas that we believe that we can offer separate services and offerings. Um, particularly when it comes to caring for and redeveloping properties for the benefit of the affected neighborhoods and the human community. And so I want to be clear, um, this is an imperative process. We've been working on data entry throughout the year. And there's still a lot of time. And so while we do have the report today, I want to be clear that this is only an initial report, and there are some data points that we haven't edited, finalized yet. And so I would encourage using the auction with the numbers that are presented today. Um, they are as solid as we have so far, but additional review is still needed. And so with our methodology staff, we have gathering and embedding data in two parts of the tax book, which are these things. These exhibit A documents, um, I'm going to pull up an example, because I think an example would be a better way to illustrate this than just trying to describe it. Also, to me, one minute, I'm going to begin that show, and initially, you know, exhibit A, and it says, as we. Um, the document is from the Christie of Central County through that different course, or expand PDS. And so we have made delivery into data, which is part of why it's a very expensive process. Um, so on this side of this, right side, we have part of the information that's included in the exhibit A. Uh, the exhibit As included in the parcel identification number, general redemption status, legal description, address information that's available, uh, with tax years, taxes, and who's owed at the time of sale, and at the time of each update, statutory costs, redemption costs, and the information on government. And so as you can see here, and this is, um, a twenty to twenty five, one that's in our data set. We have a total of twenty twenty, or sorry, twenty one in a piece that were, or in the works right now. And so this is the assigned personal number for the cap sale filing. Um, these are the personal identification numbers that are used for everything that Senator Kelly does, and what the banks do as a study. This information indicates the redemption status of each of the parcels. And ultimately, this is not coming from exhibit A, this is coming from exhibit D, which finally, since the distribution is following the sale. And so that's why there's some blanks in there, because there are some entries that were, it's a long, it still needs to be always given out. Um, you can see the others things, you can see, I don't know, the liquid years span is about four years. Um, but we have some that show up for more than that. So this one indicates twenty eleven, oh, twenty one through twenty nineteen. And we are looking at how much tax and interest is owed at that point in time. This is not necessarily how much is owed to the final sale date. Uh, we are compiling owner data, because we believe that can be important in vetting potential projects for the land bank. Uh, we would be probably advise reviewing this data set and not, um, developing agreements with others to have, uh, properties becoming theirs. Um, we look at owner address, and that's how we're also analyzing. This is a stat determination of whether, um, it is likely owner occupied. And so we are interested in that data to see, first, what is happening with homeowners who are falling to the rent, uh, the terms of greater interest to our departments, but also how we, and what percentage of investors of those properties are falling into the delinquency. And so that's exhibit A information that we're going to look at. And here you can see exhibit T. And so what I'm going to do is we'll sort this routine's category and only show those that could not be. So that will align with the information that ultimately shows in exhibit T. And some of this exhibit T, you can see, over here, it begins with the general tax, the interest penalty, and the total. And I will say, we have recreated this, developed this in our sheet, that we have tried to follow everything that shows up in PDS that we received throughout the process. Um, so the way that the tax sale process works has been understood is that whatever the sale's price, and turn the book for a good, have a little sense. Um, let's take this thirty two, thirty three. And we're going to highlight those for good measure. And so this one, um, thirty four hundred and change was over, the sale price was fifteen thousand. And so the total cost of the sale for this particular sale was more than a million dollars. I think we have a question on this, that's, and this is. Um, and so the first cost that is paid out of the process is the cost of the sale. So with that, that sale price is divided with a different person's auctioned, and allocated to each one up to the maximum available progress. So where we see on this parcel thirty three, the sale price was fifty eight dollars. The maximum that could be allocated to the sale was fifty eight dollars. And so at that point, there has been more money that can be received from that parcel. And so I was, the first allocation, then the costs remaining after that allocation, divided by the parcels with remaining balances and allocated again. Uh, these go from four to six rounds typically, until the cost of the sale is fully paid. At that rate in time, although there's a total cost of the sale, you will notice when you look at the report, the score presenting, these costs are different than what's in the report, the report considers average cost. Uh, this year, yes, in more than maximum costs. And so after this cost, we can now, we can balance two of those. So this parcel that sold for fifteen thousand has a maintenance price and has a balance remaining. And so we can go to tax, and we are able to have this parcel pay for the local tax, pay for the loan interest penalty, and so local governments to receive that when they spoke. Um, and then there is an additional review beyond, um, and we'll get to another report. But that does not necessarily have a total of the governments. And there's actually, um, there are four cases that that counts in other states, and I think Kansas has, um, been admitted to that of this one. So that's a parcel that has balance. There's a parcel that did not have a balance left. But yes, but there's no balance left to disperse, nothing you can recreate to the local government. And so our offices end up paying precisely what is the rule, and the governments will write those off. And so that's what we're looking at with exhibit A, exhibit T. Any questions? And so like I said, at this point in time, um, we have twenty one data sets in process. Um, we have not yet been able to review the suspension or edits until you're definitely absolutely correct. And so we do expect that it's the out of the first point, we'll see some minor changes in terms of details. So initial findings, what we found is that the data set contains eighty three, or eight thousand three hundred and twenty individual increases. Out of that, nearly sixty percent of the parcels only appeared once in the ten year data set, and that's twenty one different files. Um, the remaining three thousand three hundred and sixty five, and this is just over forty percent. And that's against a total of one thousand four hundred and forty two million properties. So we're seeing in that, as I said, appearing multiple tax sales is actually a relatively small number that are accounting for, as we're seeing, for the violations. So throughout that single period, um, we see that more than seventeen hundred parcels were offered for auction. And that's demonstrated here in this first chart. Um, I have included preliminary numbers based on public analysis of the most recent sale. And so I always want to differentiate between when that appears in the data sets and when it doesn't. Um, so what we're seeing, and I think there was a question to this earlier, is that about twenty percent of its time, twenty percent of persons that are, I guess, are ultimately auctioned. And so that means that eighty percent are typically retained, so there are some stories to be valid and told that have solved. And so initially, I looked for persons that appeared several times, we need to inform them more. Um, and what we're seeing is that many of those are not necessarily being sold, but rather they're being redeemed repeatedly. I saw some that had been in as many as six sales, as you can see, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, five ways, as far as the years that they were redeemed and it's probably earned. Um, some were eventually sold after appearances, and some do appear again after sale, because I think there's more to explore in there. Um, so we're seeing that it looks like owners of these properties are paying taxes in the minimum we require each year to prevent the property from being auctioned. Um, and so more interest being that now maybe one of these properties appear the year after year. And so then we're going to get into, as I was speaking, this large amount of money that's involved in this process. So in the seventeen exhibit T files that we compiled, um, we're seeing that those seventeen are allowed to more than six point five million dollars, that's the year. Um, and then interest and penalties are another one with six million. So we're looking at eight point two million plus for the total liability that is being processed through the tax sale process. And so then you look at, and you look at sales prices are eight point one million and a little extra. Um, but this isn't a perfect alignment, and I think this is something that we found interesting as we began, you know, it's. Um, so as we described, each parcel of the tax sale is part of the tax sale loan cost until those receipts are exhausted, or until the sale is paid. Um, and if a person has, sorry. I think that's all, so we can act there, so. Let's see, I have the first, the moment it goes to average cost. And so as you saw in the sample data set, next cost, uh, that could be low again, seeing one parcel is actually higher. So we obviously, and that again, this is a process, and the average cost of the parcel sold, which is something, as a general rule, is increasing. Um, some of that depends on how many cases, also, but they're not widely, that they weren't involved. But it's, it is, it is enough to see that you have a balance that was ultimately recovered from the sale. And so at that point, the remaining balance is calculated in a whole parcel, um, the remaining balance is satisfied with property taxes, and then are dispersed to hold the obligations, other mortgages. Um, I do know that on the area that we see additional impact, the other land bank program is within some other programs, our homeownership, we need, our home of their owners to issue mortgages. And so those do be affected by either receipts or write offs required in the tax deal process. And so the government is, he's affected by the initiative that was introduced to people area by the city of Wichita, U S teaching five nine, Senator Kelly, and the state of Kansas. And so whether there are receipts left, those things, these more of a variability. And so I wanted to look into the impact of this, and who collects what internal signal levies. And so this is based on the current years of levy, and it's functionable, if years to year, based on what each government to tea, but these. Typically, the state of Kansas, it's one point five miles, um, Cedric County, twenty nine point three six eight, Wichita, thirty two point seven six two, and then the U S T, actually, we've got four separate counties for the levies. Or a total of a hundred and fifteen point one two four. And so, you know, I just, the cost of the whole data set, this would vary from, uh, sale to sale. Uh, those tax sales is over one point, or almost one point two million, or almost fifteen percent of total sale proceeds. And so the remaining balance is dispersed. And so what we're seeing is that ultimately, local governments have been able to collapse two point three six four million in remaining balances. And so I found it interesting to try to see that if not somebody lost a tax sale, local governments would actually receive fifty percent of what she gave. There a question?
Yeah, I guess. Like Martin said, that's over a ten year period.
Yeah.
Um, and your, your note says, this left a total balance of almost seven million dollars to distribute. Distributions went against liabilities until the sales proceeds were exhausted, so they paid all the taxes, and the money they had left, then they distributed by from the cities, they paid all mortgages with that?
Yeah, let me clarify, I think this is where you said you had some question. Um, so it's the total cost of the tax sale that was allocated to parcels, um, was the one point one eight two million. Um, and so then the balance of six point nine million was dispersed, first towards only from taxes, interest, fees. And so I think my language there was not clear. So, so basically, the first paragraph, the one point one eight million. So basically, we first carve out the one point one eight million first. And then the balance after that's carved out is the six point nine million. Um, that's the balance left first to begin to fulfill what is delinquent and out to the others.
I'm still a little confused because then it says that the, the just dispersment may be made against liabilities until the sale proceeds are exhausted. A total of two million, twenty one thousand in delinquent taxes, as well as three hundred and forty two thousand in interest and penalties were allocated to satisfy the debts of, to satisfy the debts or satisfy the unpaid taxes.
It should be under the two thousand minutes.
Okay.
And it should also be the sales, sales proceeds for each particular. So if I look back over here, I'll even. Let me see if I can find one that was exhausted over a month. And we're not seeing one quickly, but we got to this, um, parcel thirty three, where the parcel proceeds were exhausted within the first round of allocating, um, the cost of the sales and the tax sale. Um, so at that point, nothing more than we collected from this parcel, either by the tax sale process or the local governments, or anyone who was, there was no mortgage, or anyone else who has any interest in that property.
Yes, my point would be is, let's look at that paragraph and try to clarify that a little bit. Because when you get down to the bottom, it talks about the government writing off five million eight hundred and sixty six thousand dollars, or the seventy percent of the taxes owed. That?
That's correct.
Okay, so. They brought in.
Seven million five million is the charge.
I get on it.
What would be your summary of all this?
Yeah.
That's probably what I'd like to hear, how we got there, I guess. So we're just losing lots of money.
Yeah, it would be the local government, so we see nearly seventy percent of what is owed through the tax sale process.
I don't think that's what the intent was, so.
Yeah. How much are we spending to even get there?
Yeah.
And this is just looking at.
We're spending thirteen hundred dollars on every transaction, every property to try to collect, and we're selling it for an average of, uh, last year or twenty one, it was nine hundred and sixty two dollars average cost per parcel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to say the cost of the sale.
The cost of the sale, okay. But, I mean, a lot of them are selling for.
Let's ask you, I'll be honest.
For example, when we buy a little church sale, we see residential properties that are in better condition will yield a pretty good return on tax sales. You see commercial properties go for fairly large amounts. And then you see a lot of property that's probably more than a hard area of interest, uh, properties that do not have higher bidding values or that have substantial, uh, demolitions or things like that, that are not going to be for good governance, but into them.
This five million, this was for, this is for one sale.
No, this is through the seventeen different cases.
Seventeen, but this is for how long?
Um, beginning of twenty twelve.
Ten years.
Yes.
Basically, ten years, right?
And so we talked about some additional data for people more that we don't, you know.
It's just.
Yeah, so that initially we expect actually.
So your analysis doesn't, the process doesn't work so well.
The process is ultimately designed to get people back to the market.
Yeah.
Um, to.
Once we get this.
If somebody has gone to the first four, zero, twenty years, whatever this statute requires, um, this process is designed to change conversion and helps to get back into productive use.
So out of the ten years, do you have a statistics on how many times? You said how many times they've gone for the sale, like every. Those are statistics, it's probably a proportion of that. Every six months, there's somebody, you know, wakes, packs over there, packs up. Is there, how, what that percentage was? How many times it showed up, you know, for three years in a row, to see what this case of retention.
Yeah, a long percentage of that's just, I did, I'll comment on some of the first cases that showed up for some things. Um, initially, I saw at least five parcels have been included in those six files throughout that data set. Um, I think as we clean this, you know, it's not going to be many of those markets, but I also want to make sure that, that we clean the data before we finalize those notes.
I was just curious, how many times have people tried it before they lost them at the beginning of the month?
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting question. And actually, part of it will be from this conversation, additional questions that you might still need to. So I'm going to jot that down.
I, I think the biggest issue is, I mean, you've got a lot of facts and figures in here. Over a ten year period, I'd really like to concentrate on the last, say, three or four years and draw some conclusions of what does it really cost? The community? Uh, is there any benefit of these tax sales? Do they really benefit anybody? But if we're right enough, six million dollars, six hundred thousand dollars a year, then the system is broken, something's wrong. There got, there has to be a better way to do it, to try to, try to recoup. Maybe you don't wait four years, like tax. I, I mean, I think this is something that we've got to explain to the state, let the legislature look at to determine whether or not this really is an efficient system to try to recruit, recruit taxes based upon the value of the properties that are being sold at tax.
I think the process is broken too, it's discouraged to buy it because of not being able to get their title. That's another problem itself. Because I myself personally will not buy the tax sale. There's a lot of people that will buy it because they've been through the process of trying to get titles. Can't get it if it's been served properly, though. If they're, it's served properly or notice. So I think some people just stop doing it. So I think that it drives down the profit, it drives down the proceeds or even bidding on properties to show them.
I, and I think that's literally.
That's.
Good sadist.
Yeah. So I guess as you're, as you're stepping through this, I would encourage you to look at and say, and it doesn't really fall into the land bank responsibilities, you know, I get that. But if you see brokenness, that hurts what we can actually do as a land bank. I would encourage you to make note and let's, let's try to address that. Because if we don't change, if we don't make changes, we're going to end up, ten years from now, we'll look at the same numbers and say, yeah, yeah, it's just a bad deal. Um, so we have to make some changes in order. For us to move forward with it.
I think that's what the dream of the land bank was initiated to say, this is an additional tool that can help to make those changes. Thank you.
I have a, a question, just, I, I'm, I'm fascinated by the data that you've shared, and I appreciate the team putting it all together and, and walking us through it today, uh, as well as the opportunity to read it in advance. It's, it's quite a bit. My questions really go back to what can we do with this? And are we prepared? Is it within the, the frame, um, is it within the, the authority of our committee, the, the trust, to make recommendations? And if so, could we do that based on this data?
I believe that as we know, as you said about, we see strategy, that this data will be key to that, so that makes a lot of connection to you. I think this is a board of trustees, that trust is invested in individuals coming to this board. And so that is part of the goal as we look at how to make this permanent partner.
I think definitely the answer to that question, Kate, yes. And I think staff, along with us, need to come up with some recommendations and then run by city legal council, make sure we're thinking through this appropriately. And then I'd say the next thing we do is we talk to the county about it and see if we can get everybody on the same page before.
I agree, it's a win-win for every, for the county, the state, the city.
School district.
School districts. This is crazy.
You mentioned that the different entities involved and affected, and they did want to mention just in terms of, you mentioned a lot of data, but in terms of proportional share, uh, we're looking at City Wichita over the ten years, losing more than one point six million, at least if things are allocated according to proportional share. But we also know that we are the ones involved in any sort of condemnation or payment or other processes. And that likely drives up by a part of that share significantly. They mentioned small districts.
So that is an include take care of the grass, all demolition or anything else?
It's not staff either. Yeah, I mean, you've got city staff that's spending, I mean, how big of a group do we have just monitoring all this stuff? And that's probably more expensive than what we're losing on the property.
I'm sure.
So I think if you bring all that stuff together, saying it's, it, it's a huge, much, much bigger number than what we have. And I think that will cause pause to say, it's time for a change.
Yeah, a lot of those properties, if you, especially if you saw the news here in the last year or so, a lot of them caught a fire and burned down. In fact, there was this one down there on my office off of Main Street, two buildings that were abandoned. Almost people were saved, I think, when they died there. But that costs the city probably about hundreds of thousands of million for that fire. Because, I mean, they had the bulldozers, they were all down, fire department, just a lot of problems like that.
So I would assume that we will continue to tweak this report and, uh, come up with some recommendations. And hopefully, next meeting, uh, we'll get the information out as you did before, uh, this meeting in advance, so we can review it, think about it, and we can talk about it and discuss it to our next meeting.
I was going to say with your last meeting, I would actually recommend just that. Um, just as the measures have capacity and the order we have left to lead private laser data sets, I think two years, then this very completes and polished. Uh, next meeting, when we're only about three weeks away.
What are you trying to do by November? I'm just thinking, we'd really need to have it together before hearing it in order to address the legislature. Is that January second, basically, is when they start gearing up? We need to be ready to go then.
We can try.
Okay.
And then we're extension to each month, each week.
Perfect.
Wanted to hear really quickly on this chart, and it is, this seems the tax sale information because it just made it a little too much. Um, but you can see again, the loss reflected in the spread reflection, um, or the, I'm sorry, the total, but we didn't get ahead. Um, the local bank amount recovered is in the low, and so you're seeing government loss. Um, we feel like that's really a place where, especially if we can intervene before properties get to pass sale, that would be a tremendous asset for the, the land bank's operation. But also to get these properties into a meaningful situation for developer agreements can be formed and they can get back to productive use instead of risking cycling again. And also wanted to mention this in terms of cycling properties. One of our hypothesis at the beginning was potentially that properties are cycling through and through, and sold, and sold again. We're actually finding that that is not a comment, is what we just stated. So that's good news. Um, I think I saw two properties that have been sold three times each. And another, um, you know, right in front of me, okay, there it is. And then there are fifteen other parcels that have been sold twice. And so in the grand scheme of the data set, that's the very small number, um, not the scope that they expected. And so again, initial recommendations are that we need to continue our efforts to develop a marketing strategy. And we want to make sure that anything that the land bank is able to acquire, that we're able to secure a future of productive use, which is not necessarily a guaranteed outcome from the tax sale. We also want to continue to be, um, to seek ways to monetize, to better benefit all local governments as well as the public interest. Um, when we lose money in tax sale, the way that we're seeing that we do, it ultimately ruins budgets and ability to deliver service in a supportive community. And this is my little bet. Um, it's also knocks in the general public interest for properties to cycle through these processes. And so we will continue forward with our review. Um, we have some additional research opportunities recommended. And I've been jotting down the ideas and questions mentioned today. So are there any additional corrections of the form of like, is such a good reason to take through the data?
Sarah, I love the, the research aspect of this, and the more we know, I think the more, um, mature and sophisticated our recommendations can be. And I don't want the desire for us to know more to, uh, be work avoidance and for us to get stuck in a, in a cycle of learning and not ever get to the doing piece. So I just want to elevate that.
Thank you. Um, I will mention here that a couple of other projects that are in works beyond our local department is that we're working with other departments in the city to mount the parcel that has sold, um, based on exhibit Ds. And then out of those, we believe we can identify areas that are really favorable to this current churn. Um, we're also going to be cross referencing that amount with permit data from elsewhere in the city to determine whether, when the person sells, whether permits remain, or indicate redevelopment or reinvestment of those properties. We don't have this yet, but this are in the works.
Nice.
So we will, we will continue the research, but we'll also press forward with the action items that are outlined, marketing strategies, and other strategies that regardless of, for the research tells us, um, we know are going to be part of this project to solve.
Time is of the essence, so let's do, do, do. Move forward as fast as possible. Greater data, great information.
Thank you, right, it's been all good on check, that's it.
Yeah, fantastic.
So earlier, we would have had an chunk of our parcel updates to say, well, then the seven hundred and twenty time sale that recently occurred to the greater generals as a task for further sales in the whole. And so we need to go back to parcel updates and having the updates on the whole parcels that we've been looking at as far as potential acquisition.
The first one was brought before the board as an idea on, in the July meeting. Uh, it's a multi-family complex, twenty three units. And, um, just to refresh your memory, this is one, this was, uh, converted to single family homes in two thousand and five using tax credits, home loan funds, and an F D I C loan, uh, which has a forty or fifty year compliance period, uh, attached to it, which is why I think the, why we think the owner is looking more towards the donation rather than a prospective sale. Uh, August first, uh, staff from, uh, housing, you know, A, B, C, D, conducted a walkthrough inspection, found the property in general in good condition, um, it was spot最少 deferred maintenance, and a couple of visible structural defects. So yesterday, we had an engineer out there to look at the structural defects that we identified. And he confirmed those, uh, basically said that they were from settlement. And, uh, the defects in particular were some nice scenario cracks on, uh, the exterior of the building, it's corroded, it's wrecked. I thought they were settling, uh, of an older nature, that it wasn't anything new, it wasn't severe. Uh, interior inspection noted that there was no interior damage from settling, so, um, he, he recommended some remediation of some, uh, brick replacement and some fault lines in the, in the brick panels to to give some, uh, give an avenue of movement for future settling. Um, so staff is currently, uh, looking at that. And another big ticket item involving some walkways and, uh, and stairs and things of that nature to, uh, get a better handle on what that would entail as far as cost and how that would affect our acquisition of the property. So that's where we are in that one.
Do you have any idea, like, numbers that we might be looking at, I mean, is it a hundred thousand, is it five hundred thousand?
Uh, not so far, we don't.
Yeah.
The, uh, the meeting was yesterday, so they're going to.
Just talk about. It's occupied now.
Yeah, it's occupied.
Trying to get financial information from the owner now to determine.
Yes, yes. Hope we're shutting it off. I don't know exactly, but.
Block through that they're constantly people in the house, it stays a pretty close to, yeah.
Based on my observations, I'd say that's a problem.
We're getting the final analysis for the engineer, we are working on a cost estimate of what it would. Look like to bring it up to where it's be, we're analyzing financials and hopefully getting pretty close toward bringing a little bit more information forward to be working.
And it indicated they probably territory leads before we have this report, the engineer. And then once we have that, we can give some outside assistance, so they're trying to estimate the cost.
Do you have an address?
At this point in time, we are still not ready to release an address. Once we have all the analysis done, then that will explore information.
I googled that.
Sorry, I took a south border there. And that leads us to the second update that eighteen fifteen South Greatwood, to refresh your memory, that is the single-family lot. Narrow, single-family lot with interior garage. My initial. View of the funding restrictions received, which led me to believe that we could probably acquire, remediate and. Dispose of the property using those funds. Greater review appears that all elements of the acquisition, demolition and disposition have to leave the management department, which I don't think will work here. So given that and the fact that it would be difficult to find somebody to develop the property. Staff is recommending that we decline the donation of the property.
Is there been any conversation with the neighbor about, I know there was some question about if you can contact the neighbor. That's really who should buy this.
Yeah, I think it's, it's at the point where we're gonna leave that, we prefer to leave that up to the current owner to contact the neighbors. Open up again, since he asked what's going on to do.
What would open up the can for that?
There, there's maintenance being done on the property by a neighbor. Who may mistakenly think that that's part of the property that he's renting. And that's why the current owner says just not to contact them.
He thinks it's part of his property, right?
So you have been trying to look first at knowledgeable and potentially valid use for coming between neighbors in. But it's ultimately a conversation that's pretty complicated.
Yeah.
Or do we need, maybe the owner needs to make a decision, maybe he's let that person know.
That's exactly.
And if he doesn't get it done within a certain period of time, we'll let him know. I mean, don't you think there needs to be? That too concerning for you guys?
I mean, the challenge is we have a garage that's probably in fall, it's a hazard. And where do we step in on that? And if the current owner cannot negotiate, get this thing resolved. Then the city expected to come in and demolish the garage and then hand it over to somebody and spend all that money or what's?
I think that would be code enforcement.
See, I'm not a big fan of that, but I believe that would be code enforcement.
My thought is, you need to have the owner sit down with the neighbor and explain, you really don't own this. You know, maybe we need to figure out a deal where you can, and I can get out of this, I don't have to have the city come back against me. On the demolition of the garage that's fallen over.
It's no impact tax.
No.
Only place six dollars.
Yeah.
So it leaves one one of them to pay for the tax sale.
Yeah.
So given our funding restrictions, we are not sure that we can produce an eligible outcome as we've had additional.
Because of the step side question, it's really an actual development of the property. We have to get a variant two or something. If you're maybe can kind of acquire the property or donation, put some funds into devoting the property and then, you know, maybe even drive her to acquire. Agree for an obligation, have implications with a group that might give us some development or more of a healthy, not be great. But because the law is so small, and we don't feel like it would be attractive to last for some of the. Do a couple of helping development.
All I can say is staff needs to figure out how we get out of this.
And our recommendation would be that.
Study here.
That if you learn those not to accept a proposed donation after really using recognition, it's just not applying for funding. Source restrictions and the whole thing.
Take it off our list. About tonight, the next property, we have a chat there.
We have those properties, we're considering by yesterday, staff, I think we're going to be periodically system monitor. We do have a post development agreement and I, with more than apology, I should have actually brought that back. I believe we reviewed it and generally. Want to go for world with it as it stands at our last meeting, but that shouldn't have come back at this meeting, the formal action, and I forgot to have that to be a good. We are in the process of getting our notification plans together for not only the land bank, but other projects that are early on with housing development. One of our hesitations in seeking out is that we have a list of two hundred and some individuals who have expressed interest in city owned housing. And we have been encouraged to use that as our developer list. Because technically, everybody just signed up to express interest and we can't necessarily press that list down. So what I hope to do is to be able to send out, you know, there in your future, some information that we're all people who are on that place to. Same way, which for the application, if it's like a season, they'd be covering those in our system sale versus land bank versus other opportunities. And once we can divide those lists out, we can forward. Our proposal or our, our application for developers. And so at this point, I believe we're operating under the board's blessing to go ahead and at least send that out. Let's make our identification mechanisms in place, and so with the board's approval, we can bring that down from next month's agenda on the last approval.
Sounds good.
I believe that. We are long to other business and open discussion and.
Actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute. That zoning on Greenwood, it's actually also a family piece. And actually, the minimum square foot for that is single families, twenty-five square feet, was actually seven thousand two hundred and one senses, or more, actually. Key, so it actually ended on data, single tenant house. Based on the zoning, so I'm looking right up the requirements for the zoning, right, or does it speak? Which is high density.
I think we have individuals from the real estate office on the call, we see of either of them, I think. Some of the language we need to see down there from their office. Is either John or Jerry on the call?
Look at that, that's me. Yes, it's five hundred eighty square feet per floor for multi-family.
I think there were concerns with the lobby here, there are a lot of setbacks, so why do you think we're going to?
It'd have to be thirteen foot wide, six yard side or setback, so that's pretty narrow.
Yeah.
There's the three of them variants that the home life could get out, you make it. Three, it's water, sixty-four.
Through three foot side or each side, each side, so you have.
Twenty-five, eighteen foot wide and silver thing. Two plus probably.
Also used in sanitary.
We have mentioned that there's a lot of nonsense, so. There's usually a couple of things that come to our attention. One of the things we've worked with the board is to relax, to maybe bring things more fully vetted in the future. And so we are working to get those, as we move through different opportunities, trying to learn through those processes, trying to establish relationships with us. But we bring them forward so that hopefully our process will break them. But we have had a lot of things come to our attention, if you don't have some of those.
We had the other business and open discussions, I got a couple items. One of the discussions we had earlier was neighborhood meetings that occurred, residents. We asked them what they needed, they talked about estate content, financing and making repairs and improvements. I wanted to know if we had any follow-up on that with these neighborhood associations. Also, we talked about getting information from realtor professional groups to talk about what they would, you know, see as opportunities in some of our target areas. So I'd like staff to address that in our next meeting as far as what's been done to work with the neighborhoods and the real estate professionals. We've also reviewed the development application form. I think we need to get that approved, so let's make sure that shows up in our next meeting for review and final approval. And we also had a conversation at some point about workshops for land bank and affordable housing view board. And maybe even central inspections involved in that conversation. I'd like to see if we can get that on the agenda, come up with a, an idea of what the conversation is going to be, so we can make sure it's a. Lot of meeting and beneficial to all group, so just a few things to pass that I'd like to resurrect.
Absolutely. I can hear some talk of these. And as far as repairs and improvements, certainly the feedback here in residence was a lot of layers. Especially those who have been involved, residents who are underserved in the neighborhoods. While they want to know what's the only advantage of development, so concerned about whether they can do their own problems. One of the other programs within the same real property section, our department sees that repair program. That program has been shut down for a while while we work on our detail between many years. We are working on minimizing that program, we're just re-acting, we are really excited about, we believe they're a lot for our whole estate approach. It's another one of those programs where we have helped people in small ways on an audio basis, your computer. And we're really trying to bring up programs to make it more of a, a larger infusion that really raises. The opportunity in that, that home and as they're concentrated in raising the neighborhood, the consideration of projects. Additionally, yesterday, the city also did approve a more well housing fund for her name. I would just start that as a fifteen thousand, but you program plan for all those five million that's been allocated for affordable housing. Is going to be administered, that will come through the affordable housing review board. But ultimately, that funding is designed to really to create investment in existing structures. Both the city public housing stock, as those units are disposed of, and then also in surrounding communities. Through either new development and the war on the neighborhood renovation as a project. And so we, as part of our strategy, we need to continue to develop for neighborhood engagement. We are excited to bring the programs back to the communities as options to assist. Similarly, I have looked at some workshop dates later into the year. And I actually wanted to bring back to this board and see if you would get interested in potentially adding workshop or the neighborhood meeting. As we look at just how our business is coming and. Trying to respect for people's experiences, what would we like to recover is potentially. Doing that joint or workshop in lieu of the neighborhood board meeting here and. And I mean, the vertical has been bringing more to also as well as saving members of the property. I still need to do some evaluation, including citywide inspection, decides who might be involved in those presentations. But our, with that presentation is to share more about kind of a whole array of what opportunities and tools and resources are.
I'd like to have an agenda before we set that in stone. So we know exactly what we're going to talk about, make sure we have enough. Information that's going to be beneficial for all three groups, so.
And we should be able to bring that back to our tour meeting.
And I think that's something you can also send an email out to board members if we can look at, I mean, it's. It's not like we're making a decision on anything, we're just trying to schedule another meeting that'd be beneficial for all three groups and stuff. Are you okay with that?
Also, for our tour meeting, we'll have a garage to. You're, you're asking from staff with these charities, a lot of that will be thanks to the form right to the issue today.
What might be beneficial was go ahead and prepare the minutes of this meeting and let's make a list of things that we're gonna. Have for next meeting or at least projects that we're working on between now and then, so that we identify those and keep those in front of all of us, so that we're. We're on top of those, we don't forget about us. Because I know you guys are doing a lot of different things, I, I had to sit down and really back and review all the last three months to start thinking about, okay, what, what had? Had we talked about, what have we followed up on, have we not followed? I would recommend that it'd be nice to have all of us on the men and she's, so we've almost had an agenda laid out. Maybe you can start thinking about a time, okay?
Additional business or discussion?
There's nothing else, make a motion to re adjourn, last second.
Second.
All the barriers out, thank you very much, staff, thank you board members, have a great day.
Be well, friends.